The only thing's okay. I'll probably get another one. But I'm not an eagle.
Well, hey, we've got Councilwoman Jen Daniels here.
No, 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 I think you should do it. Yes, yes, this would be perfect. It would be so special. No, this would be so special for them. It's already on, so I guess.
All right, everyone, we want to welcome you to the Town of Gilbert Planning Commission meeting of May 1st, 2003. Can I get a, or 2013, I almost went back 10 years. Can I get a roll call, please?
Chairman Jennifer Whitman.
Here.
Vice Chairman Bridget Peterson. Commissioner Anthony Bianchi.
Here.
Commissioner Chad Fuller.
Here.
Commissioner Joshua Euler.
Here.
Commissioner Christopher Sipple.
Present.
Commissioner Bob Steiger.
Here.
Alternate call call.
Here.
All right, thank you. Can I get an approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would propose that we move items 10 to the public hearing consent calendar, so that would leave items 9, 11, 12 for regular public hearing.
Great, I have a recommendation to move item 10. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that simple?
It is.
Okay, sorry, couldn't figure out who said that. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Bianchi, second by Commissioner Steiger, or Sipple. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. With that, we noticed some scouts in the audience, and if you're so willing, we would like to invite you up, each of you. Councilmember Daniels is going to help, but we'd like you to give your name, your troop number, and your rank. Hustle, hustle.
Chairman Whitman.
Yes.
I'm sorry, this is not on the agenda, so could we consider this to be communication from citizens, and perhaps one of the scout leaders would like to introduce the scouts as a communication from citizens?
If you so request, we would absolutely love that.
Can we put this on the council member update?
We could do that as well.
There's no filling out forms or anything.
Okay, perfect.
We'll just do a little early in the agenda. I don't think it's on.
My name is Brexton Gardner, and I am ranked First Class Troop 855.
My name is Paxton Wheeler. My rank is Second Class Troop 855.
I'm Zane Jones. I am a First Class. I'm Troop 855.
I'm Jackson Merrill, and I'm a life, and I'm halfway, half a merit badge away from my eagle, and Troop 855.
My name is Rigdon Merrill. I'm Troop 855, and I'm ranked as First Class.
Hi, my name is Bryce McCallan. I'm a life scout, and I'm in Troop 855.
Nick Graves, Assistant Scout Master with Troop 855.
Brigham Corrin, Scout Master with Troop 855.
Thank you very much for being here tonight, we appreciate it. They got a copy of the Constitution.
Jen, get in there. Jen, get in there. Yeah. We do this twice a month, come on.
I'll never forget this meeting. Thank you guys so much. Another item of business, there is a building code meeting that's occurring right now in Room 300, and that's upstairs. So just in case somebody arrived here thinking it was the building code meeting, it is not. You'll have much more fun up there, I think. So moving on, agenda item number four is communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters not on the agenda. The commission's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter may be put on a future agenda. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak under those requirements? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Public hearing consent. Consent public hearing items will be heard at one public hearing. After the consent public hearing, these items may be approved by a single motion. At the request of a member of the commission or staff, an item may be removed from consent calendar and may be heard and acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent public hearing and approved under a single motion. So the items that are on consent public hearing are case, agenda item number five, which is It's a modification of a separation fence requirement. Agenda item number six, which is UP 1303, it's an additional use permit for Sprint. Agenda item number seven, which is S1202, it's a preliminary plat and open space plan for Monteverde. Agenda item number eight is Z1305, and that's an amendment to the ordinance for the conditions of development with the vineyards PAD. Agenda item number 10, which was on the public hearing non-consent, was added to the consent public hearing, and that's S1208. That's a preliminary plat and open space plan for Fincher Fields for 216 home lots. So is there any, well, go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody who has any questions or comments, or do we have a recommendation?
I don't think we have any slips.
I don't have any public hearing forms. Does anybody need a presentation by staff on any of the agenda items? Okay, do we have a motion?
Close the public hearing.
Oh, close the public hearing, I'm sorry.
I'd move for approval of the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Bianchi, a second by Commissioner Fuller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to, sorry? Any opposed? Sorry, apparently I'm off my game today, which is no different than normal. Public hearing non-consent. The non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. And with that, we're moving on to agenda item number nine, which is UP 1302. It's a conditional use permit for Dutch Brothers Coffee, approximately 0.67 acres of real property located at 459 North Gilbert Road, to allow a drive-through facility for a restaurant, beverage service use, and an existing service bay facility in the Heritage Village Center. And with that, we'll invite Mr. Nathan Williams.
Thank you, Chairman Whitman and members of the planning commission. This is UP 1304, the use permit for Dutch Brothers, a little short history on it. In December of last year, you saw a text amendment, well, a text amendment was initiated to allow, limit and allow drive-through facilities on the north area, north of the Western Canal, and permitting a service bay, an existing service bay, to convert to a drive-through facility that would allow a restaurant use with a use permit. So that was subsequently approved by the council in January of this year, and now we're, we have the use permit for Dutch Brothers before us on, on the site north of the Western Canal there. So what we have here is a, it's a, just over a half an acre site. I'll enlarge it a bit. The Dutch Brothers, well, I can't, there it goes. The Dutch Brothers facility would be located here. It's an existing Havoline Express Loop station that has three service bays that you enter from the north and exit to the south. So that's what it is existing today. They want to convert that into a single bay drive-through facility that, I'll bring up the site plan here, perhaps the landscape's a little easier to look at. So a single bay drive-through facility where vehicles would enter, as they do today, from Gilbert Road and enter in from the north of the site, north of the building, excuse me, and then stack on the eastern side, pick up their coffee and so forth in the drive-through bay, and then exit the same way or throughout the center. As you can see here, here's the site plan. Basically, there's going to be, you know, an indoor work area that, I guess I can't really enlarge that for you, but there's going to be about 1,300 square feet of indoor food prep area and coffee preparation, and then another 1,200 square feet of outdoor seating, which you can see is located here and to the south. The site is going to be, you know, completely renovated, new landscaping, and access to and from the site for pedestrians as well as cars, and obviously all the building colors and materials will change and so forth. The site will change a bit. What we have here existing today in terms of parking and so forth, the, the parking to the north here will remain, there's 11 spaces here, and then there'll be some shared parking with the rest of the Juniper Commerce Center to the east. Some of this parking will be taken out in order to provide some, you know, ingress egress, multiple access points to and from this parcel, because it's shared with the overall commerce center, so you have, you know, points of access here, here, and to the, to the west from Gilbert Road to Juniper through the center. There will be no access directly between the Dairy Queen to the south. There was a point of interest at the redevelopment commission. That is blocked off with landscaping and curbing, although there'll be pedestrian access there. So what we're here for today is to take a look at the four findings of fact that are required to approve a use permit, and which are, excuse me, the, you know, not being detrimental to the health and public, public health, safety and welfare in the vicinity, conforms to the goals and intent of the general plan, conforms to the zoning code requirements, and then finally is not, does not unreasonably interfere with the surrounding property owners and the nearby property owners. Essentially, staff feels that it meets all those findings. Staff has reviewed it in-house with all our departments, traffic, and engineering, and fire, and, and public works, and it meets all our requirements. And essentially, staff is, is supportive of it. I would note that the redevelopment commission recommended approval to you at their April 17th hearing, and so now it's before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Powell.
Thank you, Chairman. I just am curious about the flow of traffic. It comes in off from Gilbert, goes east, and then it circles around landscaping, comes back in and through, and goes north, and it seems to intersect the same traffic that's coming in. And are they doing something to avoid a safety hazard there?
Chairman and Commissioner Powell, that's, that's correct. As you, it's, maybe I can enlarge, well, it's PowerPoint, I can't enlarge it. But if you look right here, this traffic has worked with the applicant to denote this as a, you know, do not block zone. So this will be demarked on the ground as it's, you know, an exit, and it's a do not block, and there'll be hatched and crossed out so that people won't park here or won't stack here. Additionally, you have stacking for, I think, eight cars that, eight to nine cars before it ever gets to that point, so there's quite a bit of stacking even before that point.
I'm just wondering, the car that's just received service, that's now exiting, I'm wondering if they, if they've considered putting, if the owner or the developer have considered putting up a mirror or something like that, so that there's no blind spot for this person who's going north, and that there's no blind spot for, I'm not concerned about the stacking, it's the, it's the arriving at that destination at the same time by two vehicles.
Commissioner Powell, I think, I think what we have here is, is, I don't know how many feet this is between the exit of the drive-through and the drive-through lane, I'm going to guess that's somewhere around 20 feet. So there's actually plenty of room for them to pull out, look both ways, and have visibility to, you know, you know, traffic wouldn't allow us to just have them not meet their visibility triangles and so forth.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Bianchi.
I guess, Nathan, the one question I had is, can you go over how much existing parking there is on the site itself? Because I know with fact number four, when we talk about interference with adjacent properties, I'm wondering if there's a lot of spillover parking, how that would interfere with them, or do they have parking agreements in place?
Commissioner Bianchi, that's correct. There is a, there isn't a parking agreement in place. The exact name of the center escapes me right now, it's pretty long. But the, the applicant has provided, the owner of the property has provided us with that document, there's a, there's a deed that, you know, shares parking with this entire center here to the, to the east. So all of this is, is shared parking that they can, you know, this site, which is the, just, you know, .67 acres as well as here. So these parking spaces along the east, I think there's about five or six there will be taken out. These 11 will remain, but these will be taken out for, you know, added access and circulation to the north around the, the building and the, the future drive-through lane there. So they're, they're required to have 23 spaces, and that's what they actually have when you incorporate the shared parking with the, the rest of the center in the immediate vicinity. There could be some overlap parking that we don't know about, even as an added bonus with, you know, anticipated, you know, sharing of patrons between the Dairy Queen and the, and the Dutch Brothers. I think they both feel that that might happen, so we've actually included some walkways in between there, so, you know. And furthermore, I think there's a lot of, the vehicles will be driving through and so forth, so it, you know, it's not, it meets the parking requirements and it's not anticipated via.
But it meets the parking requirements with the shared parking. If it was just on its own, it probably would not.
Right, correct.
Okay, thanks.
Further questions for staff? Commissioner Ayler?
I was just, I was looking at the drive access, I noticed they have to widen the access, and is there a reasoning? It looks like it was originally roughly 24 feet, and the text is pretty small, I think there are nine, 10 more feet, the ingress egress onto the site. Is there, share a little reason why?
Are you referring to the access point off of Gilbert Road?
Correct.
I don't believe that's being changed, is it? It is, to 24? Oh, 30? I guess it is, but that's from, based on a recommendation?
So, well, I guess, in getting recommended, I just want to understand the reasoning, I guess if traffic has a reason.
I can have traffic come up, and I don't, I don't know the reasoning why that, I'm sure it's some sort of standard engineering template or something.
Eric Gaderian, Town Traffic Engineer, Chairman Whitman, Commissioner Euler. Town standard for driveways has increased since this, or width is typically now 30 feet, so we've asked it to be increased. Also, with the, the increase in traffic, we wanted a wider driveway there, just to be able to, to handle turning traffic coming out both ways, left and right, onto Gilbert Road, and still accommodate the, the incoming traffic. And that's why we made the request.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Steiger.
My questions for the Town Traffic Engineer also. The first is, based on the projections for traffic, do you believe there will be any impact or changes necessary on Gilbert Road? And if so, is the town going to eat those costs? I didn't see anything in the staff report about, about that.
Commissioner Steiger, we did not, for this property, we did not require a traffic impact analysis to be performed because of the trip generation was, was below our thresholds. We do not, we, we believe there's sufficient capacity for, for left-turning traffic off of Gilbert Road to, to be able to stack, and so we don't anticipate any changes to, to Gilbert Road. And then with the, the two access points, one onto Gilbert Road and one onto Juniper, we don't anticipate any traffic impacts that would be detrimental to, to Gilbert Road itself.
Thank you. Commissioner Bianchi?
Seeing you keep coming back to the parking. When we look, when, when you guys analyze this, when we look at where the parking is, I mean, there's really no way about it, there's no direct parking in front of the building to access it unless you're a pedestrian coming off the street. So either way, they're going to have to cross traffic through the drive-through, is that correct? Were there any issues or discussions about that?
Correct. Commissioner Bianchi, and with that, we did require, we did require them to stripe a crosswalk across the parking lot to be able to access the, the 1ADA parking spot here, so that, that's how we addressed that issue.
My concern was for the spots, if people park further to the east there, because there's nothing there, so I guess it would just have to be out of force of habit, people do that, but, okay, thanks.
Commissioner Sipple?
Mine is a safety question as well. You know, there is one entrance coming south, you could turn left off of Gilbert, which I believe Bob was talking about with stacking and stuff, but you could also come in off of Juniper and come through the other development there, I believe, if I'm looking at the map right. So how, or has, has there been discussion about what happens when people decide that that's the better access point when you're coming south? And they start to back up onto the other adjoining areas, right, that you write, either stack there or stack in there? And again, it goes back to, now you've got pedestrians possibly walking across the parking lot, you've got two other entrance points. I can just kind of see some, I don't know, it just doesn't feel right, right there. Have there been discussions about the possibility of three entrances there and how that stacking could look? And are they aware of that? I mean, do they?
Commissioner Sipple, we had discussions originally, and one of the reasons that the parking is being removed here is so that we can provide, I guess, relief and, you know, to, to people just being able to stack here. The ultimate goal, and we believe that, that most traffic will access the property via Gilbert Road.
Commissioner Ayler?
Yeah, so going back to the drive-through, so you said the standard's 30 feet, the new standard, because.
Driveway.
It was driveway, ingress egress onto, off of Gilbert, and they're asking for a larger amount than 30 feet, and you said you felt there was an increase of traffic for this need. So I'm guessing, I'm trying to understand why we have to increase more than the standard, because we have pedestrians walking, and we're trying to create a pedestrian walkway.
Commissioner Euler, sorry, our minimum is 30 feet. I, I believe in our, our standard detail, it's, the driveway width is between 30 and 40 feet.
Well, that would be with the wings. This, this 33 feet is the actual driveway, plus the wings would take you over 40 feet. So, because how it's dimensioned on this plant. I'm just asking, because I'm looking at it, there is a, trying to look at the Heritage District, and, and so I'm just trying to understand the reasoning of the increase from more than the, the minimum standards.
Correct. Commissioner Euler, I, there's, there's always a balance that, that we look at, and with the, with the increased width and the, the 33 feet, if, is, if that's what it is, then we can accommodate one, one inbound lane and two outbound lanes, and so we can, we can process traffic through the driveway quicker, and I think, you know, we are still accommodating pedestrians and updating the driveway to, to new ADA standards with the, the sidewalks, so.
Is your, is your concern that, that the driveway's too wide for pedestrians to cross?
Well, I'm just trying to look at the four standards, and we're talking about the traffic, and so I'm wondering the reasoning, and the reasoning is we're having more cars coming in and out of the site.
Right.
So if we're going larger than normal standard, so what's the reason? And that's where I'm asking the question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions from staff? Commissioner Fuller?
Question for Nathan. Real quickly, Nathan, what, I didn't see it in the staff report, but that, that doesn't mean it wasn't there. What's the hours of operation for the drive-through?
Five, okay. Yeah, I didn't include it in there, sorry. It's five to 10.
And what's the hours of oper, how does that compare to the hours of operation for the main facility? Is it identical?
Yeah, yeah, I'm being told it's the same as the one on, you're referring to the, on Guadalupe, or?
No, I'm saying, is the, is the store going to have the same hours of operation as the drive-through?
As the loop facility?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I, I don't know the hours of operation for the loop facility, I mean, I could find that, but, you know, I, I'm sure it's not five to 10, you know. So this will be extend the hours, but each, then what's currently being used on the site?
No, I'm sorry, yeah, no, let me rephrase that. So the drive-through's going to be five to 10, and it closes at 10. Can I walk up at 10:05 and get a cup of coffee from the walk-up portion of the restaurant, or is that closed at 10 as well?
Let me, let me ask the app.
Okay, or I can just ask the applicant when they come up, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't know that one.
Okay. I guess, I, getting back to the parking issue, so if I'm looking at this parcel correctly, there... there, for Dutch Brothers itself, there is no specific parking on-site other than the cross-parking agreement.
Chairman Whitman, that's actually not, this site is, includes this. So as part of this, this building is all part of one site. So what you have here is you have two buildings for this site and then the parking, you know, that's part of it. When I say it, you know, meeting the parking, that includes the office use as well. So in that, in that 23 spaces that's included is the, is this office space as well. So, you know, it, this site has to be parked for both the office to the north and this drive-through Dutch Brothers facility. So there's 11 spaces here that'll be utilized by both, and then these, these other 12 located here. So when I say 23 spaces, I don't mean just for Dutch Brothers, because there's only 1,300 square feet of food prep and then 1,200 square feet of outdoor seating area. There's essentially nothing to the building.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for staff? Oh, Commissioner Ehler, we're not going to let you go very easily.
Yeah, sorry. So one last question, knowing that both buildings, so it's on one property, there's not a imaginary property line between, so if one sold, is there a parking agreement between the two parcels on the property, the two buildings on the property?
Commissioner Ehler, I don't know that I can answer that question. It's owned by one person, and Dutch Brothers is leasing it from that owner, so I can't, I don't know the potential scenario if they were able to sell one building. I'm sure they'd have to, you know, deal with that in their legal documents, but it is one site owned by one person.
Okay.
And there is a shared parking agreement with the center to the, to the east.
Okay, so the, the building owner of the north and of Dutch Brothers is the same owner?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite the applicant up. If you could state your name and city of residence for the record, that would be great.
My name is Dave Vines, living in Scottsdale, Arizona, Regional Manager for Dutch Bros Arizona.
Thank you. Do you have any presentation you'd like to give us tonight?
The only thing I would say about a couple of concerns, and it seems a lot of it were about stacking and safety for, I guess, patrons and so on, is I have a lot of different locations. I have 11 locations, and I've never had an accident with people crossing. Majority of our sites, there's, I think there's only one that people do not cross through our drive-through lane, and we just follow the codes, we follow what we have to. As far as coming around the building, as far as from the east or coming from Juniper, if someone was going to come in there, I have three sites that are like that. Hate to say it, but realistically, our customers are pretty polite, and they just let people in, and that's pretty much how it, how it works. I don't have any, you know, feasible idea of how, you know, the people would follow suit, but for the most part, I've never had any, I've never seen an argument, I've never seen people, you know, like get mad about getting in line. It's just a, it's just a polite, polite customer base, so that's pretty much what I have to say for that.
Okay, and I don't think our concern was really about anger management, it was more about safety and whether any of the customers had been, or we would be putting them in any sort of danger.
Gotcha.
Can you tell us a little bit, how many cars per hour you expect at this location? That'll kind of give us an idea.
Let's see, I guess from, I guess just history at other locations, we seriously focus on speed, generally don't have a stack of more than, say, four or five cars just because of speed. We have a runner system where a person will actually go out the back door and go take the order from the third and fourth car to help with that, that speed. So the interaction of a car actually being, having to look both ways or what have you, or having a 10 or 12 car stack, we focus on it a lot more than, say, a Starbucks would. We don't have a squawk box. We basically take orders by person, and it goes that. And we serve cars about every 30 to 40 seconds. So I would say a number for you, if that's what you're asking me, we, at rush time, probably between 6:00 in the morning and 9:00 o'clock, I would say we'd probably serve anywhere between 200 and 250 cups of coffee.
An hour?
No, between that time, 6:00 and 9:00.
Total, between the time period, okay. Because I was thinking if it was, if it was one car every 60 seconds, that's still 60 cars in an hour. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Fuller?
Yeah, I just say, what's the, so the hours of operation for the drive-through are five to 10. What about the main facility?
We only have one facility. We have a walk-up on one side, and then we have a drive-through on the other, and our hours of operation are 5:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. We do stay open till 11:00 on Fridays and Saturday.
Okay, so the drive-through and the walk-up have the same hours of operation?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sippel?
How many staff are in the facility at any given time?
Usually in the morning, there's just matters on revenue that's created, anywhere between 3 and 4. Afternoon will be 2 and 3, and in the evening, there'll be 2.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bianchi?
Was part of the parking agreement to, with the Dairy Queen to the south, or no, that's not included in that?
No.
It's not, okay. Because that would be my one concern, is I fully buy the argument that most of your stuff's going to come through drive-through and maybe a few pedestrians, I understand that, but I'm just thinking if you've been there a couple of times, you're going to probably utilize that Dairy Queen to park and walk right up, rather than parking across and then walking in. So that's kind of my concern, and there's no shared parking there, so that's one concern I have, but I think majority of this is all going to be drive-through.
Sure.
Can you state your name and city of residence?
My name is Bill Cantieri. I live in Phoenix, I'm the Development Manager for Dutch Brothers Coffee. And related to the question about the Dairy Queen, I mean, they are very excited to have us there, you know, as a neighbor, and, you know, one of their, you know, one of their requests, you know, is, was actually that we, you know, add a, you know, add pavers in the landscape area, you know, so people could walk back and forth between the two sites. You know, so they actually, you know, see us as being a benefit, you know, to their benefit, you know, I mean, and, you know, to be able to walk back and forth between the two properties.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for the applicant? Commissioner Steiger? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Are you okay?
With that, well, is there anybody here in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? I don't think that I have any cards for this particular item. Okay, seeing none, the applicant doesn't have anything, I guess, in rebuttal to say, to nothing. Staff, do you have anything further to add? No? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the dais for comment, discussion, possible motion. Anybody want to lead us off? Commissioner Bianchi?
I can start. I did have issues with the parking. I think there'll be enough to utilize that. If I was a business owner to the building to the north, I might have some concerns, trying to put that up, trying to have businesses coming and going with my customers as well. I think a lot of folks are probably going to utilize that Dairy Queen. I'd probably see if there was an agreement between the Dairy Queen, because that's where my concern would probably be. Although when we looked at this, you know, the Heritage District is a redevelopment area, this is a redevelopment use. We had this discussion at length last time, when this came before us originally. It's small scale, it's pedestrian-friendly, as you're walking up, I think it builds into that vision that we were looking for, for the Heritage District, as far as a food and beverage service on a small scale. The Redevelopment Commission looked at this, they approved it unanimously, which weighs heavily with me as well. And I do think, with the parking aside, I think all the four findings have been met.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Steiger?
I had a concern that the staff and the applicant addressed related to finding, number one, that there should be no detrimental impact to health, safety, general welfare, and the questions that I had related to the impact of traffic on Gilbert Road were answered, so I don't have any, any further concerns or issues about this.
Thank you. Commissioner Ehler?
Overall, I'm looking at the design, I still have concerns with the parking, how it lays out and how it's going to flow. I really do believe once this gets operating, that the Dairy Queen will, might have a second opinion when people start parking in there, because I really do believe, I mean, if you have a patio right there and the easiest parking spot, people that come to the place don't know whose parking spot is whose, and so you're going to start loading that up instead of parking across the way and down, because it kind of dropped down a little bit over there, so I still have issues with that. And I think pedestrian-wise, we're not being friendly to the Heritage District. I know that's separate from what we're looking at today. I still feel the use designed for our amendment, I'm not in agreement with, but past that, I would be voting in favor of this, this site, because it is meeting the four criteria that is set for this site, so I would be in approval.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Powell?
Well, frankly, I think this is a very good use of this property. It's innovative, it allows the property owner who owns the property to benefit from it. It brings in more activity, it brings in customers, I think it's good overall. I'm pleased with it.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sippel?
Apparently, there's always one that looks, looks at things differently. So taking the safety, the first one that we've talked about a few times with parking and pedestrian, I agree with what's already been stated as far as parking at the Dairy Queen. I just wouldn't see myself parking at the building to the north of it, and there is no parking to the east that's readily available to it. So I think it does cause a safety concern for pedestrians coming across the drive lane to get to the walk-up area. Now, do I think there's going to be a lot of walk-up? I don't. I agree with Commissioner Bianchi on that one. Furthermore, the staffing is going to take up three to four parking, let's say, three spots on average, so we know that's going to be there as well. And the flow for the heritage area with a pedestrian-friendly, although it meets it to the south, I am concerned about the entrance area getting widened off of Gilbert Road that was mentioned. So I unfortunately don't feel it meets the safety piece of it, so I would not be in favor of it as it's currently, currently drawn.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Fuller?
I don't have anything to add. Are you ready for a motion?
I am.
Okay.
I think Commissioner Steiger had, was readily available and wanted to make the motion, if you don't mind.
Oh, no, I have no pride of motion-ness.
Okay. Commissioner Steiger, lead us off.
I move to make the findings and approve UP 13-02, Dutch Brothers Coffee, a conditional use permit for approximately 0.67 acres of real property located at 459 North Gilbert Road to allow a drive-through facility for restaurant, beverage service use in an existing service bay facility in the Heritage Village Center zoning district north of the Western Canal, subject to conditions.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Steiger, a second by Commissioner Powell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passage, oh, sorry, Commissioner Sippel, that's right. Motion passes seven to one.
Six one.
Six one. I am off tonight. Man, I even had dinner. All right, moving on to agenda items number 11 and 12. These are companion general plan and zoning cases, so we'll hear them both at the same time if the rest of the commission agrees, and we'll just, when it's time, make separate motions. But it's GP 1302, it's minor general plan amendment to change the land use classification of approximately 58.8 acres of real property, generally located east of the northeast corner of Al Vista Drive and Riggs Road at Adora Boulevard, from residential zero to one dwelling units per acre to residential one to two dwelling units per acre. The effect of this amendment would be to increase the allowed residential density from a maximum of one dwelling unit per acre to a maximum of two dwelling units per acre. And the zoning case, or Z 1303, rezone approximately 58.8 acres of real property generally located east of the northeast corner of Al Vista Drive and Riggs Road at Adora Boulevard from single-family 35, zoning district to single-family 10, zoning district with the planned area development overlay, and also to modify conditions of development to increase the minimum required lot area to 13,000 square feet. The effect of the rezoning will be to increase and allow an increase in residential density and amend development standards. With that, Mr. Al Ward.
Thank you, Chairman Whitman, and members of the Planning Commission. As you mentioned, this is the Riggs Road and Adora Boulevard general plan and rezoning amendment. This site is known as Maricopa County Flood Control District, surplus land, or the Toll Brothers site. We've previously discussed this case on the April 3 meeting where it was continued. You can see the site there, it's an undeveloped site on the north side of Riggs Road, on the east side of the Maricopa County Flood Control District. It contains 58 acres, and it's immediately north of Adora Trails to the south. And the Adora Boulevard, you can see the intersection along the south side of the site. Again, we are on an enlarged aerial, 58.8 acres gross, currently zoned, single-family 35. The adjoining residential subdivisions to the east are known as Greenfield Acres III, and to the north, Greenfield Glen. These subdivisions have SF 35 and SF 43 zoning. Gives you a little bit of the context of the general plan. The site is shown there. The proposal would be to amend the general plan from zero to one dwelling units an acre to one to two dwelling units an acre. A little bit closer in, this is the current general plan classification, zero to one, that's a single dwelling unit per acre, and the request would be to increase that up to two dwelling units an acre. Similarly, the zoning request would be to change the current SF 35 to SF 10, single-family 10, PAD zoning district for the site. So at the previous meeting on April 3, this was the site plan that was proposed, 117 lots, approximately 21.5% open space. You can see the eastern boundary had that comb or kind of a zigzag setback. Setbacks along the east boundary were as low as 54 feet, and along the north boundary, approximately 73 feet. This is the revised plan. Subsequent to that continuance, the applicant has met with the neighborhood on a meeting on April 18, and the revised plan, which now appears to be satisfactory with the neighbors, has resulted in a reduction in the parcels to 114 lots. The density has dropped to 1.94 dwelling units an acre, just under two. Open space has been reduced, and the lot sizes have been increased. Open space is now just under 20%. Of course, that meets the minimum 10%, exceeds it greatly, or substantially, I should say. So you can see how the eastern boundary has been increased with the setback. Now the minimum setback along both the north and eastern boundary is 90 feet, as I mentioned previously, was as low as 54 and 73. So there's a 90-foot landscape buffer, I shouldn't say necessarily a buffer, but a separation distance, because some of that includes the streets. The lot sizes along the north and east boundary of the site have also been increased from approximately 13,000 to 14,000 square feet up to approximately 20,000 square feet. And you can see the reconfiguration of the site the way it is, larger lots, more substantial buffer along the east side of the site, pretty much the same overall design with the private gated community access right at the Adora Boulevard, Riggs Road traffic signal, and then the lots aligned up around the site, still a significant two-acre open space near the entryway. So I think with that, I'll conclude the presentation. I know the applicant's here, he's got some additional information from the meeting with the applicants, but this is the revised site plan. The date on this is April 23, and that's the date of the revised site plan. It is stipulated for the conditions, and with that, I'd be pleased to answer your questions. Thank you.
Sorry about, thank you. Did, did the applicant provide you with the revised stipulations as agreed upon by the neighbors?
The applicant is going to present those. There are a number of agreements as part of that, and I just mentioned one or two or three of them.
Okay, we can cover that.
And he can follow up on that as well.
Okay, we can cover that during the applicant's presentation. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Steiger?
Al, one thing I didn't see is, is there any connection trail-wise or pedestrian walkway-wise with any other trail or walkway outside of this particular piece of property?
Commissioner Steiger, yes, that is existing and the intent, if I can say it, both ways like that. The central canal, central The central canal, Central Wash Trail runs up along the east side of the property and ultimately exits at the northwest side of the property and will connect at some point in the future with the extension of that trail along there. Currently that land, as I understand, is owned by Maricopa County Flood Control District and ongoing discussions are with them. There's some opportunity for that to be extended in the future. Along the south side, the west side of Adora Trails has that same Wash Trail connection which can be accessed via pedestrians along a sidewalk on the south side. So pedestrians could cross at the signal and extend along the sidewalk and then proceed south and westerly along the Wash on that existing Wash Trail. The northerly connection is contingent upon agreement with the county flood control district.
Could you, I'm not sure I understand how there's a possible connection off the northern edge of the property. Is that, I don't, is there any way you can show anything? There we go. Thanks.
That, you can just barely see that the trail extends all the way along the eastern side. It's accessed from Riggs Road to the south. That'll be, that'll be an open area where the public can extend, can come along this trail as well as used by the actual residents, of course. And then there's an opening at that location in defense that will connect with the trail to the north as that is provided.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes. Yes, Al, thank you Chairman. Under staff recommendations, item B8, could you speak more toward that please and explain that to us? It talks about all-weather minimum 20-foot wide secondary emergency vehicle path. Would you please address that so that we can actually see how that comes to fruition?
Yes, certainly Commissioner Powell. What we have is, if you really look at it carefully, we have a, of course, there's a single access location with a divided roadway at the signalized intersection which comes up. So we have full loop streets at this point from that access. From this point onward, there's really, it really almost forms a long cul-de-sac. Even though there's loop streets, there's only a single access to this entire area. There's no other connections to the east vehicular, no other connections to the north. So from a fire safety and, fire and safety point of view, if there was a constriction at dislocation, the vehicles couldn't access it. So, and the only way, there's, the two ways that have been provided for to overcome the emergency scenario of a block each year. First of all, all homes would be stipulated, at least from this point on, if not the entire plat, to be sprinkled, sprinkled. So they'd all be sprinkled, which would help from a fire point of view, but also from an ambulance or police point of view, if there were a blockage, a dislocation, there would have to be a connection up through here through a all-weather road, some kind of connection, whether that would be DG or a compacted granite or something like that. So essentially, there's going to be emergency vehicle connection opportunities between this point and this point of the loop and this point and this point of the loop. I hope that helped to explain, Commissioner Powell.
Thank you, Al, but it just doesn't show that and it's nice to be able to see what the full realization of a project's going to be. So are you saying that the landscaped areas then on the north, not the north, but on the east then are actually going to landscape in emergency pathway for vehicles if needed? And that would be DG, whatever else might be compatible with landscaping design and...
Commissioner Powell, that's correct. It would be an all-weather surface that would allow vehicles to traverse up through that area. Again, this is a conceptual development plan, or I shouldn't say conceptual, I apologize, the development plan. We will be, the Planning Commission will be seeing the actual plat in the future and as well, the Design Review Board will be reviewing the open space plan for the site. So you are correct, it's not shown well at this, on this scale, at this development phase, development plan, but it will be more closely looked at and that's why the condition is there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I don't have anything. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
With that, I'll call up the applicant. If you can give your name and city of residence for the record. Mr. Lake, welcome back.
Shawn Lake, Mesa, Arizona, here on behalf of Toll Brothers. It has been a very productive 30 days since we were here last month talking about this project. And in that time, at the conclusion of that hearing, we made a commitment that we would go back and work with the neighbors. And we did. And I have to give a lot of credit to the neighbors. They put forth a lot of effort to get everybody together and meet with us onsite and on their back patio and we sat and had several meetings with the neighbors since the last Planning Commission meeting. We appreciate their time and we were able to come up with a compromise position and revise the plan to reflect an agreement that was reached between the property owners and Toll Brothers. I believe that the commission has received a copy of the compromise letter from the neighbors signed by, did staff not, did you give them a copy of that? I'll show it. Excuse me, here, your connection's loose.
I didn't get it, did you?
There we go. Here, I've just, I don't know if you've received a copy of this letter, but in working with the neighbors, they've been, they were very good and good to work with and we were able to come up with a compromise. And this is a letter from the adjacent neighbors after several meetings talking about things that they would like to see incorporated into the plan. So they put together a list of things that we have agreed to with our plan and then they took it around and put a lot of time and effort getting all the neighbors to agree to that. So we come to you this evening in a spirit of compromise where we can present a plan where we believe that both the neighbors and Toll Brothers have reached an agreement and moved forward. Let's walk through the plan and basically what we agreed with the plan. You'll see the revised plan as Al had pointed out. Let me just highlight some of the things that are included in this plan and that we have agreed to in writing with the neighbors. As Al pointed out, we will have a 90-foot setback along both the north and the east side. And then in addition to that, we also will have minimum 20,000 square foot lots here and here. And those lots are listed in the site data table specifically. We've also agreed to single-story homes in this area here. And again, those are listed there. We also agreed to a 20-foot side yard setback. And so if you put that together for these homes, the 90 feet, the larger lot, the 20-foot side yard setback, before you would have any structure, would be a minimum of 110 feet from the property line. So it really created a large substantial separation between the Greenfield Acres neighbors and this future development. Let me see if I caught everything. We've got single-story homes. Did the commission, let me just ask you this, did the commission get a copy of the recommended conditions? Because I can pass that out if you haven't received that.
I think a couple of us got them, but I don't believe the entire commission received them.
Chairman, may I approach the bench and pass these out?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Lake? Mr. Lake?
Yes.
I would appreciate a copy of that too, please.
Absolutely. So what that lists out are things that we have specifically agreed to with the adjacent neighbors in Greenfield Acres that we agree to provide as additional conditions or stipulations or whatever you go on the record that we will do as part of this project. They include, with the development plan, the 90-foot buffer, they include the larger minimum lots of 20,000 square feet. It includes the 20-foot side yard setback, includes the single-story homes. We agreed to work with the property owners on the grade differential between the north, along the north, so that we minimize that. We agreed to enhance the landscaping along the north and east side. We agreed to work with our landscape architect to choose a type of tree that would minimize what I call tree trash so that we don't have problems with that. And I think I, did I get everything, Rick? Oh, we, the lighting, we agreed to work with the town staff to minimize the lighting. Because these are private streets, we don't have to have the big lights every so many feet. We can minimize the lighting in here and then along the east side and the north side where the trail goes, we will have the ballard low-level lighting. And we also agreed to work with the property owners along the north and east side to maximize the opportunity to have a shared common wall. There, in certain locations, there's a existing wall that we think we can, we can share in common. Some places there isn't a wall, but we're gonna work with each of those property owners individually to get permission to share that wall. And so our goal is to have a shared common wall. And I think, Rick, that addresses all of them. We agree however the commission wants to do it, we're okay with adding those as additional conditions of approval. We're going on the record to saying we've committed to do all those things and so that's on videotape and on the record and will be reflected on the minutes as far as this project. So we think we've come a long way with this project to something that we can come together with the neighbors. We think it's good for the community, will be a great project at the end of the day and would request your support. I'm not gonna go over everything that I went over last time because I don't want to be here forever.
Thank you. We appreciate that as well. All right, thank you, Mr. Lake. Is there any questions for Mr. Lake? Commissioner Powell?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Lake, thank you for your presentation. I'd like a little bit more discussion regarding the wall that divides the properties that are adjacent to each other on the east side and the north side. Now, as a developer, is the developer intending to build a wall and if so, what type of wall that separates those properties?
Chairman, Commissioner Member Powell, our intent is to use, in working with the neighbors, is to have the same wall, to use the wall that currently exists and go in and we need to assess first whether it's stable and can be used and second, that the property owner will give us permission to touch the wall because the wall may be on their property, one inch or two inch. And so we do, the worst-case scenario for everybody is to have a parallel wall. We don't want that. We want to use a shared wall and then on our side of the wall, we would obviously enhance it and decorate it to reflect the character of what we're trying to do here as opposed to just a plain gray block. But that's something that we will work out with the neighbors and with the Design Review Board.
Okay, so in summary, you're saying that presently there's a standard CMU gray block wall that's six feet high?
At most locations, yes.
Okay. And also, I'd like you to comment, the east border of the houses that are to the west of that 90-foot separation, is the developer intending to put a decorative block wall there that's similar all along that, and that would, that would also be a secondary buffer? Or what's the plan there?
Chairman, Commissioner Member Powell, there will be a wall that runs along here and in most instances, it currently exists today and that would be a shared wall here. Each of these lots, for example, the lots that you identified along this, are east side. Those are 20,000 square foot lots and those homes will be anywhere from 3,500 to 6,500 square feet. And they will build as part of their home, when it's built, a wall that goes around their backyard. And so there will be intermittent walls along here, but there won't be a solid wall, let me get my dot there, there will not be a solid wall that runs internal on the, what would be the west side of that 90-foot buffer. What that wall will be will just be a wall that goes around the lot, the backyard of each home, if that makes sense.
So stated another way, you're not gonna have a theme wall running down parallel with the street or the buffer. You're just gonna have a lot-specific wall for each house on each lot.
Correct. The theme wall will be here.
Right.
The lot-specific wall for each home will be there.
Which will get built when the houses get built.
Correct.
So it is required that whoever buys the property then will be constructing a standard six-foot block wall?
Correct. Chairman, Commissioner Member Powell, that will, that will be part of the home package that they buy.
The developer will install that at the time.
Yes, Toll Brothers will install that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Lake. With that, we have only one card so far up here to speak. Is there anybody else in the audience if you're wishing to speak? If you could fill out a card in the back and bring it up to the roundtable up here, that would be great. We have a Mr. Ostapuck who says he wishes to speak but does not indicate whether he's in opposition or in favor. Welcome back. If you can give your name and city of residence for the record.
My name is Greg Ostapuck. I'm a resident of Gilbert. Thank you Chairman Whitman, Commissioners. I appreciate the developer's 11th hour negotiations with the adjacent neighbors on a compromise that they can all live with. I am not here to undermine their work. As I have learned in the last few years about the history of the Sandtan character area and the vision of the many stakeholders for its development, I have become an advocate for this once potentially unique area. I have also been able to get to know many of you and have learned much about the general plan and the land development process and for that I'm grateful. However, it is sad those living in the Sandtan character area can no longer rely on the general plan to protect the Sandtan character area. Few know of this demise unless the dream house that they bought is next to undeveloped land as it is happening one parcel at a time. You would think the burden to amend the general plan would not fall on the Gilbert residents that overwhelmingly voted for it, but on the typically out-of-state developers that want to change it. But when neighbors raise their voices in opposition, deep-pocketed developers are always prepared in defense. I've heard much when developers ask for the general plan amendments. For instance, developers will argue to consider the general plan as it was back in 2001 at one time. The next time, they might say, well, just look at the general plan in 2011. They will argue executive lots are not desired one time and the next time they are. But one thing is constant, higher density is requested and granted. In fact, the Sandtan character area has lost over 50% of the designated low-density opportunities in the last 10 years. Case in point, with this specific general plan amendment request, we've heard the developer's desire and the planning commissioner's support for executive housing on executive lots under land use one to two homes per acre. As the developer has argued, there is a shortage of such. Ironically, just last year, four surrounding neighborhoods strongly voiced their support for executive housing on executive lots with land use one to two homes per acre just a quarter mile away from this piece. Did the Planning Commission vote then, as you probably will tonight, for one to two homes per acre? No, they did not. The Planning Commission instead voted to recommend a general plan amendment to two to three homes per acre that doubled the density. And why'd they do that? Well, in this case, the developer argued executive housing on executive lots was not marketable and the Planning Commission agreed. Agreed again with the developers. Opposite arguments, same results. Developers win, Sandtan character area loses. Both examples doubled the density of the current land use and favored the developer over the current voter-approved general plan. over the current voter-approved general plan. The planning commission and town council are the Gilbert residents' only line of defense. However, to my knowledge, developers have not lost a general plan amendment in the Sandtown character area, ever. How in the world can any resident make a solid quality-of-life, home-buying decision based on that track record? As you vote tonight, I hope this planning commission truly believes lower-density executive housing is needed in the Sandtown character area. However, your actions will speak louder than your words. The next time a Sandtown character area general plan amendment comes before you for increased density and smaller lots, how will you vote? I and many others will be watching. Thanks, and let's keep Gilbert great.
Thank you, Mr. Ostapuck. Any questions? Mr. Ostapuck? Thank you. We have a few more cards that we received. I'll go ahead and read these into the record. I have one from a Rick Roman, who says she's in favor and does not wish to speak. And the comments are, "Perimeter owners agreed to drop opposition because of the new compromise plan and conditions." I have one from Leslie Roman, says she's in favor and does not wish to speak. And the comments are, "Want to make sure conditions are tied to the PAD, so changes cannot be made." And then, the last card I have is from Natal Patel, and says, "In favor and does not wish to speak. I do not object to the PAD and conditions." Okay. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Does the applicant have any further comments that he'd like to make? I'm sorry?
Chair, Commission Members, I just, again, wanted to thank the property owners that we worked with. We were able to reach a compromise after the last, and I think came forward with a better plan, and also provides a plan that provides a real substantial buffer and will be very attractive. We think this is a great, great project. It's a gated community, and will provide a current type of housing that you just don't find. There are a lot of people that want a large, big home, but don't want a three-quarter-acre lot, and they want to live in a gated community. So, this is a housing-diverse opportunity that will be provided here, that we're looking forward to building. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and request your support.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Powell?
I just have one more question, more for clarification. The wall that you will require the resident to build on the east side of their property that's adjacent to the 90-feet buffer, that's going to be set back 20 feet. According to your setbacks, that'll be set back 20 feet on their property?
Chair, Chairman, Commission Member Powell, maybe I, let me correct myself on that, so that I can make sure that is clear. I appreciate you bringing that up. The wall that will be built, will be built by the home builder, Toll Brothers, and the wall outside, outlining the backyard of that home, will be built by the developer, and it will be at the property line, not at the setback. The setback that we're referring to is the home setback.
Okay, so, from the sidewall of the resident to the exterior property boundary on the east side, that will be 90 feet?
From the sidewall of, say, Lot 68, which is one of the eastern lots, from that wall, it will be 90 feet to the property line, our eastern property line, yes.
Okay, I just wanted-
Sorry, I had to say it out loud to think through it, so, but yes.
Wanted to understand that.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lake. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Bianchi.
Mr. Lake, can you reiterate? Did you say that you had agreements or agreements from all of the buffering property owners, or at least the developed lots? Was that correct, or no?
Chair, Commission Member Bianchi, our understanding in working with Mr. Roman is they contacted or attempted to contact all of the adjacent property owners on the north and on the east. And I believe they have signatures from 16, 13 of those, and some they weren't able to get hold of, or were non-responsive. Is that fair? But everybody who knew about it, or were interested, or involved, signed that agreement, or that compromise position.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fuller?
Mr. Lake, you wouldn't have a problem if we memorialize some of these compromises, or all of them, in the motion, would you? I mean, I know it'd be in the minutes, but I think it'd just, excuse me, I think it'd be easier for residents, for everybody. It's just, it's always easier if you can just actually pull the approved case later on than having to go read the minutes on what the compromise was.
Chair, Commission Member Fuller, we actually anticipated that. That's why the sheet that we passed out has it as B-10 through B-16.
Yep, sounds good.
Great. Any further questions? Counsel, yes, Phil Smiley?
Yes, Commissioner, Chairman, I do have a problem with these conditions as written, because I'm very concerned about the lot numbers being listed in the condition.
I thought about that, too. Can we just reference the site plan?
I think there has to be a better way to phrase this, because the lot numbers are not firmed up until the plat is approved, and I don't have an exhibit that has lot numbers on it.
Right, that was going to be my suggestion, is what, aren't we referring to a site plan that does have lot numbers on it? And if so, then-
I've not seen a site plan that has lot numbers on it.
I have an amended site plan dated 4/23, and it, I went through and made sure that all the lot numbers matched up to the lot numbers referenced in the stipulations. So, I think maybe we could, that was going to be one of my comments, too, is maybe stipulate that these specific stipulations correlate to the site plan dated 4/23/13.
I can't read those numbers. I'm sorry.
You can't read the numbers on the site plan?
Yeah, well, on my, on my computer, they were, like, just blobs. Is there a way to describe those? I mean, are these, like, all the lots on the north and east?
They are on the north and east boundary, north of the, I think, the clubhouse area. The lots south of that aren't included. But all the lots, it seems like, on the far eastern boundary-
Well, if it would make her more, if it would make you more comfortable, we could just cross-hatch them on the exhibit.
That would make me very much more comfortable.
Solves the problem?
You could just cross-hatch it.
Why don't, Mr. Lake, will you work with staff to cross-hatch and make sure that the neighbors see the exhibit as well? I mean, I'm sure that they'll all agree to the same exhibit, but make sure that it references exactly what counsel's looking for to document the file? Okay.
And it's going to be a little bit tricky, because you have some of them that, you know, in B-10 and B-11, all the lots are the same, but there's some, on the side setbacks obviously don't apply, so you're going to have to have different types of cross-hatching, or, you can figure out the way, it's, right?
Yeah, one other concern, developer agrees to use its best efforts.
Where are you? I'm sorry?
I'm at B-13.
Well, I think the reason for, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Lake, I think the reason for that is they don't control that process.
Right, but my point being that that should not be a zoning condition.
Well, if it- I think that was a compromise, that, I think they're going to do-
There are agreements with the property owners adjacent next, you know, that can be separate, they don't have to all be memorialized in the zoning. I don't think that particular condition is really appropriate for a zoning ordinance.
Well, I, again, Mr. Lake can probably address this, but my original thought, and the reason why the stipulation was probably included, is that if their property line boundary, or their wall, is not on the shared property line, that maybe they added that to make sure that there weren't dual walls installed, and that they would use their best efforts to use a shared wall rather than constructing an additional separation wall, which I'm assuming that's the reason.
I can, I can read it, and I understand the reason for it, I just don't think it's appropriate for the zoning ordinance.
Okay, here's my two, my, my personal sense, is that if there's an agreement reached with the neighbors, and the neighbors want it memorialized, because that's part of their agreement, then I feel that it's, in my personal opinion, okay to add.
Yeah, I don't find it effective.
I'd agree with you.
Okay.
Staff? Do you have any further comments?
Commissioner Whitman, I just wanted to mention that, should the planning commission find favor with this case tonight, this was, I just wanted to advise the neighbors that this was originally scheduled for the May 16, excuse me, May 16 Town Council after tonight's meeting, but unfortunately, that had, that case had to be continued till June 6. So, I just want people to know, so they don't show up on the May 16, but rather the June 6 Town Council meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for staff? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and bring it back to the dais for discussion. Commissioner Eiler?
I was, I was just rereading 13, just to add the two cents. It might be just, I agree with the terminology, but maybe we reword it a little bit, where it's, developer agrees to build a site wall if an agreement, or an agreement can't be met with the shared wall, so they have to build one, or they use the shared wall, instead of saying best efforts. So, you're defining, you're going to have a shared wall, or you're going to build a new wall. And so, just, instead of, because then you're, you know what the answer is, there's not a gray zone there at that point.
I think, I understand what you're saying. I think the concern is not really whether or not there's going to be a wall there. I think the concern is that, and I may be wrong, but I think it's the neighbors want, this is a neighbor-requested stipulation, and I think what they're saying is, we want, to the extent possible, we'd like you to work with the wall that we have. So, you avoid, which hap, I mean, I see it all the time, you get the dual wall, where there's like the three-inch air gap, because they're off property lines.
Right.
Not only is that a hazard, it's just, it's unsightly. So, so I think that's a concern. So, you're saying, you would revise the stip to say something like, if the developer's not able to, I'm trying to get, what would you-
Well, that's what I was thinking through it a little bit, is basically giving one or the other kind of answer to it. So, work with using wall, because I want to reuse the walls that are there, and it only makes sense, because they just become a trash collector at that point, if you have a three-inch gap. But it gives a, an answer, if I can't come to an agreement, then I have to build the wall.
Would you want the, I guess that's my question, do you, what happens if they didn't want it? But let's say it was off property line, would you want them to build another wall? Would you want to make them build another?
No, no. That's what I'm saying, is if, come to agree, use existing shared wall, use existing shared wall, and, I mean, I don't know-
Well, the code already requires them to install a perimeter wall, so if there's not one in place, they will have to install one.
Right, so, then what's?
So, I think this just says, hey, hey, guys, we'd really, really like you to use our common wall that's existing there. And they're saying, yes, we'd like to do that, too, but we need to make sure that the proper agreements are in place to do so, and that the wall is structurally sound. I think that's kind of where they're going, and assuming that the wall is structurally sound, and they get the proper agreements in place with the adjacent landowners, if it's not on the property line, then there's, there's no issue.
Can I make a point? I think if, if a commissioner is having this much trouble interpreting this, then maybe Phyllis is right, and maybe should remove it, if it's causing this much discussion.
Right, because if you did remove it, then you've made the decision, you have it, or you don't.
Right.
But if you, if you remove it, you're not allowed to have, you're not allowed to have the wall if it, on something that's not your property.
Yeah.
Well, this isn't going to affect the neighbor's property, anyway. This only is-
It's for them.
Yeah, this is, this is a requirement of them to use good-faith efforts to use the neighbor's wall. They're not going to care if we move, bring this out. It's really the neighbors, if, you know, I, do you want to reopen, do you want to ask Sean?
We can reopen the public hearing and hear further comments from Mr. Lake.
I think the commission has identified exactly why we want to have a shared common wall, for, we don't want it to be unsightly, and I think the neighbors are concurrence with that. Whether you have it in as a condition or approval, we're still going to live up to it. That's something we want to do, and we have agreed to with the neighbors. And so, we want to make sure that the neighbors understand, we're going to do it, regardless of what this commission decides.
Okay, I think-
Chair, if I can just possibly offer two cents here, the project does need to go through a preliminary plat, open space approval, both with you and the design review board, and the wall's really probably better handled at that. If you really feel like you need to condition it at the design review or the planning commission, it can be done there. By then, they'll have more engineering done on it, and have some time to figure out what is best.
I think if this was an agreement with the neighbors, I'd like a representative of the neighborhood to give us their thoughts and opinion on if they're okay with us removing this and dealing with it at a different public hearing. We just want to make sure that if this is, if this, if this is, we already opened the public hearing.
Hi, I'm Rick Roman.
Rick Roman, thank you.
So, I'm one of the guys who was representing the adjacent lot owners and stuff, and I guess, I'm not sure where in the process you're talking about that that would be tied down. I guess our concern is, we think that we're aligned in our, we think that we're aligned in terms of our desire for a single wall, but if for some reason, Toll did not happen to be the developer, if something happened, we somehow wanted to tie that into the pad or have it memorialized in some fashion.
It's, a quick question for staff, is there a variance or anything required in order to use a common wall that may not be on the property line?
No, there is-
On adjacent property?
No, usually, the discussion that we're having now regarding a dual wall, no dual wall, or the use of an existing wall, or the possible renovation of an existing wall, is typical discussion for a preliminary plat, open space. With the concerns that the public has now, so that they're guaranteed they're not going to get a dual wall, that process is a preliminary plat, where the planning commission approves the preliminary plat, which is the detail of the graphic you see now, and then the design review board will actually approve the walls, the landscaping, the lighting, the height of the wall, the color of the wall, the materials of the wall. So, you have two public hearings ahead of you for the details of this project, especially the wall.
So, is that done after the Town Council meeting on June 6?
That's correct. And it is the town's desire to see what you desire. Yeah.
I think because we're aligned, and because the likelihood of it not being Toll is remote, and basically, the priority of this one relative to all the other things, I think that we'll be okay with that.
And if I may, sir, I think you would be, you certainly got the comments from yourself and the commission and the applicant in the minutes, so when it does come to pre-plat, whoever it is, you know, even if it's not Toll, you can say, "Look, we removed it from the stipulation on the zoning case, because it was more appropriately addressed at the preliminary plat stage."
I think we can live with that.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Thanks for your input. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the dais. Anybody? Anybody?
Sure, I'll go.
Commissioner Fuller?
Look, I think, you know, it's interesting, the first time I saw the site plan was a while ago, and I remember, the first time it was shown to me, I thought to myself, you know, it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good site plan, but I can kind of tell where the pitfalls are going to be. You know, the pitfalls are going to be around the boundary, and I think my recommendation was at the time, not like I'm, you know, a wizard at this stuff, but, you know, it'd probably make the most sense if you stepped everything along the boundary on those areas to single-story, and you kind of went for a bigger buffer lot. You throw that on top of the, you know, the roadway and the landscaping buffer, I don't have, it's not that I don't have a problem with this project, I think that would not be a fair characterization. I think it's, I think it's a well-designed project. I think it looks good. I think it's going to be a success in the town. I think the density at 1.9 units per acre is an appropriate density. I read the minutes from the last meeting, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I read the minutes, and I agreed with what you said, Chairman, on the buffer transitioning in the area. I think 1.9 dwelling per, units per acre is a, is a good use for this particular site. Every site, I understand the comments that were made earlier, every site is unique, and so it's difficult, it's difficult to say, you know, compare one zoning case to another zoning case, or a general plan case, because every site has its own unique properties. And- because every site has its own unique properties and, and, and conditions. So I, I think the developer and the neighbors did a very good job of, of finding a compromise that worked for everybody. I'm sure the developer didn't get all that they want. I'm sure the neighbors wished they could have come to this months ago and didn't have to spend the time going through this. But at the end of the day, I, I think that this project and the neighboring project will be a, a compatible use and will be a good use of this project. And I'm in favor of it.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Fuller. Commissioner Bianchi?
We've heard this a couple of times. I've given my comments before, so I won't continue to beat that issue. But in regards to Mr. Ostapuck's concerns to the general plan amendment, I know we've discussed this on a previous case before, so I, I definitely understand your concerns, especially in this area. But from my standpoint, I look at this on a case by case basis. And so with this case, you know, this was excess land that was previously owned by the county. And the additional buffers and conditions that were most closely impacted by those neighbors who are going to be most impacted by this development, they've worked out a compromise. So I think with that, with the continuance, the applicant has addressed the neighbors and most of the commissioner's concerns that were stated. And I think a more compatible proposal has come out of that. So with that, I would support both requests.
Thank you. Other commissioners, any comments? Commissioner Ailer?
Originally, in looking at the site, I had issues and of, for a lot of the same reasons, buffering, how were we transitioning from one side, which the, the less dense zoning where, was to, to a much more dense property. And, and I really appreciate the developer and the neighborhood working together. And it really shows that if you give a little time to it and there's a lot that can be worked out and people can talk and work, work the issues out and there's, there is a solution. So with that, I'd be in favor of, of this passing.
Thank you. Commissioner Steiger?
As I said during the last meeting, I have a concern related to the, the density and to how the general plan and the Santan character area seem to be out of, are very much out of touch with what the staff and the planning and zoning commission are doing, whether you look at it on a case by case basis or whether you look at it in aggregate over the past four years. And related to what Mr. Ostapuck had to say, when an individual buys some property and sinks some money into the most, to the largest investment they're going to make, they do so by looking at what zoning and land uses there are around, recognizing can be some changes. But my concern still relates to what the Santan character area says in the general plan and that I think there's, we're doing a disservice to the residents by having such a definitive part of our general plan that we're not following and we're just ignoring some of the central tenants of the Santan character area. So I can't support this, but I will tell you that I think this is an excellent example of citizens or residents getting together with a developer and coming up with what is an outstanding plan. I think I wouldn't have a problem if I was a, a neighbor down there and it was zoned already, one to two dwelling units per acre. But I think it's time for the town's staff, the planning and zoning commission, and the council to come together and say, just like we did for the Heritage District, hey, we've got something out of sync with how Gilbert is growing and we need to address that. And I want to mention or specifically call out some of the pieces in Chapter 10 of the general plan that deal with the character areas. The purpose of the Santan character area, page 22, is envisioned as a combination of rural residential and, and suburban neighborhoods that can enjoy a rural environment. And it says, the following goals and policies reflect the desired character. Maintain small agricultural uses. There's a bullet there. Use large lot residential areas that integrate with the agricultural character as a relief for more intense suburban development. Connect developments with rural themed green belt buffer that includes multi-use trails. Next major goal. Maintain existing low-density rural residential neighborhoods. Bullet, sub-bullet. Land to be used for one acre minimum lots and custom-built homes as identified in the land use map. So my message, which I'll be writing individually to each of the town council members, and my message to the acting planning manager and development services manager is, we need to look at updating this because it's out of sync with decisions that, and staff recommendations, decisions by planning and zoning. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Steiger. Nothing further?
For my two cents, I'm, last month, I think, was a difficult month for everybody involved, for the neighbors, for the applicant, for us as a planning commissioner trying to weed through this case. And I think in those particular instances, those create sometimes the best cases. Case in point being tonight's case where we have a handful of neighbors, the applicant and staff all coming together in support and having changes made to a plan to make it workable and livable for, for all, all affected parties. And that's commendable. We really appreciate the neighbors being involved, involved in the process and willing to work with the applicants. We appreciate the applicant being willing to work with the neighborhood and working with the home builder to, to give a little flexibility to... Are you leaving during the vote? To give a little bit of flexibility to, to, to create a plan that's workable for all. So I, I really want to thank you for that. I appreciate the new design. I think that it's a better, better design ultimately. And so for that, I will be supportive. And just for the record, we just lost a commissioner. Commissioner Steiger?
Okay. I would be happy to tackle a motion on this.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
I'm also, hold on, I'm also fairly confident I will probably get it wrong. So feel free to correct me and get the recommended motion up. All right. Let me ask that. How are we going to, how did you guys want to recommend, staff, how did you want to recommend the, the site plans that currently, or the, I'm sorry, the stipulations that currently refer to lots? The crosshatch was just my idea, but how, how do you want to do that?
Commissioner Fuller, first, the first motion should be the general plan. But when you are ready for your motion on the zoning, I think you could just say, subject to the stipulations that have been submitted by the applicant with flexibility to the staff to reword into appropriate language.
And as depicted on the exhibit dated 4/23, maybe? So that we give a little bit of specificity to a, a plan that's been approved by the neighbors, maybe?
All right, so hold on. Subject to...
Well, or you could just say, subject to the agreement by the neighbors as written into the ordinance by staff.
Subject to...
Because basically what we're going to do is we're going to take that language and the, the agreement, the conditions that were submitted were the same as those agreements that were between the developer and the property owners. So, you know, we, we would like some flexibility to word those in more appropriate language for the...
Counsel meeting?
For, for the ordinance.
So for the residents here, just pay particular attention when the case goes to council, there may be some rewording of the language of the stipulations so that staff can appropriately document what you're asking for.
I have every confidence it will be...
Yes, it'll be, right.
And we can, or, or staff can provide them with a draft so that they can review it before the council meeting.
That'd be great.
It'll be available.
Okay. Okay. All right, you ready for a motion?
I, I am.
All right. I move to recommend to the town council to approve GP 13-02, a minor general plan amendment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Fuller, a second by Commissioner Sipple. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. This one's going to be a little tricky. For the reasons set forth in the staff report, move to recommend to the town council to approve Z 13-03, as requested, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report as amended, as further amended by the agreement with the neighbors, with the flexibility to staff to draft those ordinances in prior to presentation to town council, other than B-13 will not be included within the amended stipulations.
The only thing is, you said draft those ordinances, so draft those conditions.
Sorry, draft those conditions.
Into the ordinance.
Yep.
And I don't think these were a part of the staff report either, so I think these were just a supplement provided by the applicant. Okay. Perfect. I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Fuller. I have a second by Commissioner Sipple. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate your time. Okay, moving on to administrative items. Agenda item number 13 is minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the study session, a regular council meeting of April 3, 2013. Commissioner Bianchi?
It still falls to me.
It does.
A very minor change on page 26 of the regular meeting minutes at the bottom of the page. It should state plat, not plot. So, anybody else have any other changes?
Good catch.
If not, I will move, motion for approval.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Bianchi, second by Commissioner Powell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Okay, we're on to communications. Agenda item number 14, report from the chairman and members of the planning commission on current events. I don't have anything specific, but Commissioner Bianchi, I think, does.
I do. On Monday, we had our second meeting for the capital improvement project planned stakeholders meeting. So this is an annual process that we start as they start discussions for which capital programs and projects are going to move forward and prioritize for the next year. So it's good discussions. Members of utility companies, contractors and developers are present. So it gives them an idea to what projects are occurring, allows them to weigh in on priorities. And it's a nice consideration that the town does. So I know they all appreciate that. So the project costs, the schedules, they'll all be presented to, to planning commission and provided to us most likely next month at our June meeting prior to going to council. So...
Great. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 14, report from the council liaison, which we kind of had her report during the, the boy scouts being here.
Commissioner and, Chair and Commissioner, Councilmember Daniels did leave a note with me. She wanted to share. I thought maybe Bob's, Commissioner Steiger was going to mention it. I believe that he was appointed as the liaison to the Transportation Master Plan Committee. Is that correct? Right. He, he will be participating in the Transportation Master Plan. The town has set up a website called GilbertOnTheMove.com. And there will be a meeting on May 7 at 6:00 PM at the barn at the Power Ranch, and also on Wednesday, May 8 at 6:00 PM at the Southeast Regional Library. So if anyone needs any information on that, we do have a website set up for it, or you can contact planning or our traffic department to, for the public to participate in all of these meetings. And also, Chair, you had asked for our residential permits, 174, Kate, have been registered as of just a couple of days ago for the month of April.
Nice. And how about the zoning cases coming in? Are they free flowing?
We're busy. Yes, we're very busy. There's a potential that we would have a general plan, a major general plan amendment. The deadline is May 31, which means the neighborhood meeting and pre-application has to be out of the way the month of April. So yes, you, you will be very busy.
Great. We look forward to it. It's been a few slow years, so it'd be nice to be utilized again.
Thank you for everything.
All right. And that, I assume, was the planning manager's report. So we'll go and, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, everyone.